It's only one Friday at a time right now, one Friday at a time.
Good morning.
All right, good morning Commissioners and over to you Chair Harrington.
Well, good morning. We're all having a slow time getting started this morning, this day, some Tuesday in November. I in fact find my written packet. So let's see, Commissioner Rogers is helping me out. It's November 12th. Uh, let's see, and the first item on the agenda is the FY 24 quarterly management report. For Q3, right? Did we start too soon? Oh, no, you had to get the clicker. And Commissioners heads up, oh, by the way, this is Chair Catherine Harrington and with me thus far is Commissioner Roy Rogers, Vice Chair Commissioner Nivee Sivai and Commissioner Pam Trees. And Commissioner Willie is on his way. He'll just be a little bit yet this morning. In your inbox, we have a new uh version of the document for this first quarter FY 25 quarterly management report as well as a updated set of slides. So before Ms. Angie dives in, you may want to grab that for yourself. So you have it on the screen. Clerk Moss, what does Commissioner Rogers have, do you know?
He has the most up-to-date one that's offered.
Heaven is that fast in the morning. Thank you Clerk Moss. All right. Thank you, Ms. Angie, for giving us a few minutes to catch up with you.
Holiday Mondays, I call them a Monday Tuesday. You have fun of two days combined in one. So here we are. So the purpose and outcome of today is this is your board's first quarterly management report from the county administrator that provides an overview of One Washington County work plan and strategic program and project highlights that support your strategic, your strategic plan update. So the outcome for today is receive feedback. There is no decision or formal direction needed from the board today. Really, this is a first look at the format and any improvements in preparation for January's. So a bit of background, how did we get here? As part of the county administrator's goals, the board has requested the delivery of quarterly management reports to you. The board provided feedback and direction on the format of the report at your April 2024 round. So as you may recall, this report will highlight a strategic program and project initiatives within the five primaries of government as outlined within your strategic plan update. So how does this fit into our management system? The board adopted your strategic plan update earlier this year. And then the last goal is single department work plans and strategic plans. So this management report is reporting out on those activities within the county. This past spring, Washington County departments and offices began development of our 2024 and 2025 One Washington County work plan to align with your strategic plan. This was the first time that there was a countywide work plan effort. Many of our departments, of course, and divisions have work plans. However, this was the first time to really collect into a single repository that ties back up to your strategic plan update. We've been working on a corresponding dashboard to be developed to annually track organization-wide goal attainment, key performance indicators and outcomes. Key performance indicators and outcomes are also listed on the management system graph, which was in the slide four. So I want to underscore that we're a learning organization and building a learning culture. This is, as I mentioned, the first work plan. So I want to underscore, this will be an iterative process as we learn the development of goals and move forward with your direction from the Board of Commissioners. So an overview of the dashboard and there was a full report. So what you're going to see on the slides is just a few examples. But I want to walk you through how to read this. So green means on track or that activity or initiative is going in accordance to schedule, or in some cases, it may be ahead of schedule. Purple means it's upcoming, so it may not, it may be happening in a future quarter or it's the next phase of work. Blue means completed or finished. Gray means status pending, activities have not yet had a status update. Yellow means off track. This could be a whole reason, wide variety of reasons of why initiative is off track or behind schedule. Such as outside support that we were planning on or staffing changes, funding, et cetera. So that any description of why an item initiative would be off track would be listed in the roadblock section of the update. You will then see a red means blocked. That means something is happening to pause the initiative. Or we may have to complete something else before we start that. If it's a blocked bar, there would also be that description of what would be needed to move forward that work. And black may be a discontinued initiative. Sometimes things change throughout the year and what we thought may be a priority or initiative may change. So that would mean it would be discontinued. And of course, that descriptor would also be in the text. We also have cross-functional goals. So cross-functional goals are org-wide goals. That means they touch every, the majority of county offices or departments. So the examples of our cross-functional goals are to improve the structure and function of organization-wide internal and external communication. This is a multi-year goal. Number two, design, implement and analyze employee and community engagement surveys to assess employee satisfaction and key components of the One Washington County culture. In a recent work session, we discussed that the county is moving forward. And Commissioner Fai, I believe you had raised this, for the first time, countywide employee engagement surveys. Number three, establish and deliver a centralized countywide equity, diversity, inclusion, professional learning and development plan available to all employees. I'll connect this goal to the conversation we had about training. Not all departments, some departments have little to no training budget. So this is ensuring that we have countywide training available relative to EDI initiatives. Number four, continued improvement in procurement programs to improve DVE participation rates specific. We have made improvement. There's more work to do though on capital construction projects, reducing time and effort to contract for goods and services and development of an insurance matrix to produce more equitable results. So throughout the report, you will see a brief overview of some of the program highlights. In the health and human services area, overview of progress and conversation relative to supportive housing services, deflection, the community development five-year consolidated plan. Public safety, local option levy, jail capacity study, community corrections, state standards for probation and parole contact. That has not came to the board. So I'm just going to highlight that will be significant new information for you. Under land use, transportation and economic development, the urban services alignment framework. So this is the partnership between the county Tigard and Beaverton to look at our urban services alignment within unincorporated and city boundaries. WCCLS, funding and governance project and local option levy. And number three is a grant we received from ICMA to advance our work in economic mobility. And we are partnering with other cities and counties across the country. An overview of property taxes from ANT. Under general government, update on enterprise resource planning, classing comp and job descriptions, strategy overview. So the next steps, because this is the very first report and will be, the next quarterly report will be submitted to your board in January of 2025. So that reporting period in January will be the reporting period of October through December. April will be January through March, July, April through June. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have a back ones? Yeah. Commissioners, any comments?
Um, any question?
Comments and questions?
Both, yeah. Excellent start. It's probably looked nothing like this in two years because you'll be refining all the time, but I know how it is when you're leading an organization. You don't always know exactly how things are working because I think, we think we do, but we, we don't because people are self-reporting. What are you, I'm just out of curiosity and you can take this off the board response if you want, just tell me later, but how are you making certain that you're getting the information you all need at your management level? To know if you're really making the progress you think you are? You're teasing that out.
Yeah, so within check-ins on a monthly basis, the assistant county administrators or myself are having check-ins with the departments on these goals. Part of what we're also socializing is for a department or staff to say it's on, it's yellow or it's red or it's black can be, does that mean we're failing? No, but we need to talk about where we may not be meeting the pace that we originally intended when things aren't going well. So part of that is building that learning culture, Commissioner Rogers, and also lifting up very freely when things aren't going well. And that's something that we've continued to build on. And so I think-
Can I expand just for a minute, not to belabor this, but that's a high level. I get what you're saying and those are all exactly what you ought to do, but I suspect that there's some metrics that you're not sharing necessarily here because the higher level that you're using to actually not just trust, but verify that the information you're getting is accurate. I mean, you must be doing something, a little deeper dive. All this, is that right?
So we have been, and that's been part of department assessments. That, so that process, I would say that's a sub-process. And I'm going to connect to a recent assessment when we hired Marina and company to really look at our budget process. And there was feedback given on how we can do better from a staff perspective, also in service to the board and community. And so that's that continuous improvement too, because otherwise we don't, don't always know. Or my lens may be different than a manager and a department.
And you got a bunch of levels. Yeah, well, thank you.
Any other comments?
I'd just like to say, I like the, the project management tools that you've employed with the different colors because I think it and your comment about, does black mean failure? No, no, it means changes. It means this is an iterative process that we're going through and you have the opportunity to keep us apprised of what the status is. For me, that's what I-
Tanya, I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you for your dedication and for advancing our shared priorities, especially the five areas, our shared areas. I, I think I thought about like, what if I, by the way, it's a great report and I've already shared some community members. It's a way to demonstrate all, because sometimes things get lost and things could be said, like what is the county working on? So I've already shared with some community members because it really lays out of how much is going on. And I know that's at the service level, so. But I just want to say, let's keep the momentum on high priority initiatives to ensure all work aligned closely with our commitment to AQUI and community impact.
Excellent presentation.
Commissioner Willie, I know you didn't have the benefit of hearing this updated presentation. And you may or may not have had the opportunity to read the updated report that we received just after four o'clock yesterday. So don't feel compelled to make, but I wanted to make sure you knew you had the opportunity to. So I'll just dive in.
Thank you.
I, I do think this is a really good start. But I think we also need, one, to have the opportunity to read the information. But two, I think the board needs an actual review of the information, but more importantly, a discussion. One, where we hear from you, how you're using it to establish goals with the organization on at least an annual basis so that there's a plan of record. And then how you're using it from quarter to quarter to gauge what, what is going well, what, where are there new issues and so forth. But then also for us to know how to use it. How to use it to hold you accountable, how to use it to support you, how to use it to really understand how the direction from the board is being first taken, but secondly, followed through on. And so this, you know, I, I worked at Intel Corporation for 10 years. I get plan of record. I get, you know, PLBP, SLR, all of that. A lot of business management, you know, running, I had my own P&Ls, I had my own business units, so. And turned on a dime as well. So I think it is worthy of some discussion. I just happened to turn, the ICMA Economic Mobility Grant felt, seemed very new to me. I haven't had that on my radar at all. So I just happened to page through the text in the front and saw it on page 12. And it says the team has participated in this since May of 2025. If it's not 2025, right? I mean, I'm not dreaming.
No, that was a clerical error.
That was last year.
Yeah, like, okay, I haven't missed a year of my life. Okay, thanks. Just pulling a funny there on you folks. So I think there's really, there's good information in the first 15 pages. I would just like us to have the opportunity to read it, digest it and come back and discuss as a board what it means. Then I have a question. For the remainder of the document, are you using a tool?
Yeah, we're, sorry. We're using Invisio. So this was a tool that we actually had procured using CARES dollars. And this is how we've been reporting out on ARPA and our online ARPA dashboard. So we've been building the internal practice of how to start using dashboards and tools. So that's the tool that we're using.
Okay, I have a couple of requests. One is, there's an awful lot of white space. Secondly, impossible to read. So I mean, this was just printed off in our printer upstairs and I can't read it. I mean, I can read it on a monitor and that's what I'll do and make my notes here in advance of that subsequent conversation. But I also think there's something between this text and the detailed dashboard. And that is a summary dashboard of some kind of, that would fit just on two pages to be the snapshot of the quarterly report. I went through this process three different times over 12 years as a metro counselor to get to the point of having a quarterly management report. And then the council started disengaging on it. So that is why I'd like to have us discuss what the, the document and the tool provides for us. And then, you know, keep, we'll keep going for a first year and come back to it. I think we also ultimately need to end up with standalone guide to future boards on how to use this as just a starting point. Because we know there will be changes in board composition in future years. And it's, it's not presently obvious how to use that. And I don't want to bog down the quarterly reports with that. I fundamentally, I think there's a lot of powerful information here. I don't know if Invisio has the opportunity to modify some of the report formatting, because this is where the juice is. But I think it's, it's compared to the nothing we had before, this is really great, really great. And my hope is that it will help us in our future decision-making, but also in our tracking. For 2024, the board abandoned having a very simple chart of our own initiatives with quarterly defined dates. So we had a plan of record for key initiatives we had before us. And then we had a process where we reviewed that twice more each year. And so we have instead just a very simple BCC focus list. But I can't tell if we're on track or, or not yet. So I'll have to marry that up. So this is where I expect maybe the presentation would be that simple two-page dashboard, but I can't tell what is proposed, proposed changes to the POR, plan of record, what's on track for the plan of record or not. So that's where I'm trying to get.
Okay, so I think there may have been several questions in there that were with comments. So I, I will, I can share that the board's priority list or focus list that you have now, all of those items are reflected within the dashboard. All of those items are on the project pathways that we talked about. In upcoming management reports, there will be some new information that will come out into, in the strategic focus areas or new information. This time, most of those items were information that has already come to the board. The, those narratives provide an opportunity to also highlight some items that may not have been to come to the board too. This will be an iterative process because we are doing this work with existing staff resources too. So appreciate the continued feedback from the board so that we can make this a report that is beneficial to you and also beneficial to the community to be able to report out, right, the significant work that the county is accomplishing too. In time, once we continue to refine our practice, we, the link to the dashboard will also be made available to the board. In time, we're still, we just loaded those goals, I think, within the last two months. So we're, we're rapidly moving this work forward. So it is an evolving report and practice.
Yep. And that's, that's why I've started with, this is a really good report to get going. So I think we've got some work to do together moving forward. So I would ask that we have an additional work session for an hour between now and our last meeting in December to go over this and have the opportunity for the board to at least read those 15 pages of text at the beginning, as well as to have the opportunity to go through each of these dashboards and to, for you to pick a set and highlight what that dashboard is saying or not, to make sure that all five of us are calibrated in terms of what that data actually says. Does that sound reasonable? Okay. Anything else Commissioners? Okay, terrific. Thank you very much. Job well done. So our next topic is library funding and governance process, current state assessment with the libraries team. I know we're ahead of schedule, but are you able to accommodate that? Terrific.
Welcome to my world.
That was a surprise. Good morning, everybody.
Now our facilities.
Do it all.
Yes, it does everything. Good morning Chair Harrington and Board. For the record, I'm Marnie Kyle, I'm one of the CAs and have the pleasure of having the Washington County Cooperative Library Services as part of my portfolio now. And really, we're happy to be bringing this presentation to you today to talk about this important topic about because as we go through this journey of where are we going to head with our libraries and serve the community to the very best of our ability within our resource, resources within the county? And how, how will that impact what we need to move forward with recommendations for your board to consider as you think about the levy? So this is an important first conversation on that journey. And I will turn it over to our subject matter expert Lisa to take you through this presentation.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning Chair and Board. I'm Lisa Tattersall, Manager of Washington County Cooperative Library Services. Oh, so I'm here today to provide your board with an update on the library funding and governance evaluation process. I'm going to provide some background on our library system, review the funding and governance process so far and our timeline. Our main touch point today is the current state assessment. And then, and our next steps that we are undertaking to build shared solutions as a cooperative. So background first. Public library service in Washington County is provided by a partnership between the county, nine cities and three nonprofit organizations. Together, this network of relationships and service delivery, we call ourselves the cooperative. WCCLS is a Department of Washington County and provides funding, core infrastructure and support services to link 16 library buildings into one countywide system, which benefits all county residents. Library buildings are operated by our partner agencies, which are cities or nonprofits. And those partners provide staff, physical collections, programs and services within those buildings. They also maintain those buildings and fund those buildings. The WCCLS Executive Board is composed of the city managers or assistant city managers from each of our nine city partners, along with the president or chair of the nonprofit board for each of our nonprofit partners. This group is advisory to your board. Then there's also the WCCLS Policy Group, which is composed of the library directors from our system. And they are advisory to the executive board and to WCCLS. Here's an overview of our current fiscal year budget. In fiscal year 2425, WCCLS is funded by a transfer from the county's general fund as well as revenue from a local option levy that expires in June 2026. Out of this combined revenue, WCCLS provides library funding allocations for our partner agencies and funds the core infrastructure and support services provided by WCCLS, including our heavily used digital collection. And funds the core infrastructure and support services provided by W C C L S, including our heavily used digital collection. The current levy and I G A's intergovernmental agreements expire in June twenty twenty six. And then the next levy cycle would be July twenty sixth through June twenty thirty one. And there are two primary goals for our funding and governance process. And then milestones and deliverables associated with each of those. So the first primary goal is to improve service consistency and equity across the county. There are three outcomes tied to this goal, and each has a concrete deliverable that will be delivered to your board. The first outcome is to establish a common or shared understanding of the current service levels across the system and the total cost to provide those levels of services. I'm here to here today to share the highlights of that assessment and talk about how we are finding solutions on our journey together. All of the groundwork we have developed in getting a good understanding of the current state is flowing into the outcome. Of establishing base service levels for all county residents, which is the the second outcome on this slide. This work is happening right now with multiple gatherings of city managers and library directors in November and December. Staff plan to bring to your board a report with those future recommended base service levels and what that would cost. Along with three to five funding options for your board to consider for the upcoming levy cycle. This is on the rolling agenda for the January twenty eighth. Continuing on with the broader goal of improving service consistency and equity. The final outcome for that goal is to determine roles and responsibilities. In providing that base level service to the community, as well as how we create mutual accountability for achieving service consistency and equity. Staff plan to bring a report outlining recommended governance improvements that would be integrated into future I G A's. To your board at work session in September twenty twenty five. The second major for this process centers around a fiscally sustainable future for our library system. So that we can can continue to meet community needs. The first outcome there is is tied to the outcome on the other slide, which is identifying options to fund those base service levels that are identified. And recommended to your board, and that will also come to your board in January in the form of some levy rate suggestions. Okay, here we go. The second outcome is to establish metrics to allocate funding for partners operating libraries. Currently, we depend on historical practices to allocate funding, and it is time to revisit those with an equity and data-driven perspective. This will come to your board at work session in June twenty twenty five. As a report that outlines the recommended funding formula, criteria, and distribution methodology. Along with financial projections for the cooperative county and partners based on based on the recommended allocation formula. A little bit of where we've been to get to this point. Many of the issues and opportunities we're addressing with this process are longstanding questions. About the current government's governance model of the cooperative. All of these specific process goals, outcomes, and deliberals, deliverables, all stem from conversations with your board. And staff brought the initial scope of the funding and governance project to your board back in July twenty twenty three. After that, staff worked collaboratively with our city and nonprofit partners to draft an R F P scope. And criteria for the project and scored proposals that came in. The agreement at that time was that Marina and Company was the best proposal. And after the contracting process, we began work with Marina and our partners in March of this year. Wonderful. All right. A little more about the process and the timeline. This slide is just another just reminder of those two main goals for our process. Improving service consistency and fiscally sustainable. And then this is those same milestones and deliverables that you saw on the previous slide, but with a little you are here arrow. So we can see where we are today and will be sharing that current state assessment report with you. I think another thing to emphasize with our process is that the library system in our county doesn't work without the contributions of every partner in our system. The county, nine cities, and those three nonprofits. There's a strong commitment to partner collaboration and community engagement in this data-driven process. The process is very interactive with our partners. There's multiple interviews, onsite visits. Participatory work sessions for the executive board and library directors, and our consultants are doing a lot of research and data analysis. Since this process is so collaborative, it's really important to have a clear decision-making framework. This is what your board supported for this process at the work session back in July of twenty twenty three. We use the, oh, I always forget the acronym, but it's the Public Participation Organization that I can't remember right now. I A P two, thank you. And we use their framework to really just help align everybody on on our roles in this process. And we continue to reference this framework in our ongoing work with partners. As the governing board of the cooperative, your board will be making the final decisions on recommendations. And the recommendations that come to your board need to be supported by at least two-thirds of our city partners and two-thirds of our nonprofit partners. Another timeline. Your board is also working with staff through a levy process. And these next few slides outline the funding and governance process timeline along with the levy development timeline. Because they do intersect and inform each other. So the levy process is the bottom row of this table, and the funding and governance process is the top row. Items in orange text are board touchpoints. And then we are here at the last column on this particular slide. Last week, your board received an update on the levy survey development on November fifth, and then today we're here for the current state assessment. Looking ahead, in January, staff will return with a shared recommendation from the cooperative for baseline service levels. And a recommendation of levy rates tied to base service levels for your board to consider. In addition, E M C Research on the levy side will be doing round one of the lev- library levy polling in January. All of this work will inform the ballot measure recommendations that staff will bring to your board. Later in the spring for the November twenty twenty five election.
Need to interrupt right there.
Yeah.
We wanted to refer it early into. We need that time. In order to be successful with the campaign. For the November fourth ballot. So. This is where that April-June timeframe, I'm looking at the two liaisons. Over there, because. I want to make sure that there isn't time creep. So we really need to get the referral done early June. And it's going to be, June's going to be really tough on us, June and summer this year. You know, July, August, September, because we will have come off of a really hard budget cycle. But we're going to have to just press hard.
If I can respond there, I think when you see the June thirtieth. Date there, that doesn't mean that referral wouldn't wouldn't happen before that in June. It just means that's the end of the cycle for the staff.
But in the orange, under, I don't see a June thirtieth. Oh, no, that's, you're looking at June thirtieth.
Twenty six, that's right.
So up in the second column.
Okay.
June, report outlining. I haven't looked at a twenty twenty five calendar. Sometimes June starts because of the Memorial Day holiday, like on Friday. So we have to make sure we are done, done, done with the referral by the second Tuesday of June.
Thank you, Catherine. I was looking at the wrong date. And I I believe that that. That's always been in our mind in terms of when we need to be done. I but I appreciate the call to action, and that's what you're providing.
I figured I better better raise it now. Versus later on.
Absolutely.
That's all I go.
Thank you.
My hair is not on fire. Let's be clear.
Lisa says, but.
Thank you so much for letting me flag that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, we've got a lot of work to do, but we're we're trucking along. We're making good progress. Okay, let me.
And I know it's a lot, but these three timeline slides really do help see that whole big picture. Right, because after there's the referral, there's taking it to the voters. And then from there, we've got to get the I G A's done. So it really helps see all the different pieces and all of that collaboration. That your previous diagram talks about, so thank you.
Absolutely. If I could just make a comment and Commissioner Willard asked you to turn in here too. I think at our last meeting, we had a really deep dive into all of this. And what what we have the benefit of knowing is what the relationship is between. The the top line and the second line here. But it's very confusing, as I can imagine, or maybe not for you, Catherine, but I'm I'm worried about. Not other commissioners, but just people in general, that we're doing this one piece of work. But at the same time, it informs the levy work, but they're not totally codependent. So it's, and as we go through this, some of the information that the that this report uncovers is amazing. Fascinating. So it'll be useful as we talk with our partners through the levy as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's good. Agree.
I'm going to pick up with the September box. So here we go. In September, your board would receive a report outlining the near-term governance improvements. Which would be incorporated into the next I G A with our partners. And that draft I G A would come to your board for review in February of twenty twenty six. The new I G A and the new levy cycle would be in place July twenty twenty six through June twenty thirty one. The project would close out with Marina and Company issuing a final report with lessons learned. And any potential long-term recommendations for, long-term recommendations for our cooperatives, funding and governance, along with a roadmap to execute those. Should your board wish to do that, staff would bring this report to your board in the fall of twenty twenty six. Pause here to make sure, and then because the next step is going to be talking about the current assessment. All right, so we're going to shift to sharing about the current state assessment of the cooperative. The goal of this milestone in the process is for the partners. To come to a shared understanding of the strengths and opportunities in our cooperative. And for us to begin developing shared solutions together. Just to mention the two photos that you see there are some action shots from some of our sessions with partners. And you see a mix of city managers, library directors, and W C C L S staff there in the photo. So Marina has done a wonderful job of bringing us together with a lot of post-it notes and coffee.
And congratulations on that huge survey response. I know my household received the postcards and it was pushed out via social media and emails and whatnot. What a great response.
It was.
Thank you, community.
Yes, it was thrilling to see that level of response. And the current state assessment was informed by a broad community survey that we conducted in July and August. And we received responses in four languages before we sent out the survey in four languages and received responses in four languages. In addition, Marina and Company has done deep data analysis, looking at community indicators, library metrics, and county and partner financial data. In addition, city managers, nonprofit board chairs, and library directors have been engaging deeply in interviews and collaborative work sessions. Working together to develop solutions for the opportunities identified. So this work really is a journey that we're all undertaking together. And I think staff and your board are so grateful, staff and the cooperative, sorry, are so grateful for your board's leadership and support of this journey to cooperative solutions. From this point of understanding a shared current state, the cooperative with support of Marina and Company. Is working through a process of developing shared solutions and recommendations to your board. In three focus areas, funding, service, and governance. And then those recommendations in those three focus areas are intended to inform the future state of our cooperative under your board's leadership. So our first focus area in reviewing the current state is funding. I'm going to share a high-level overview of the strengths of our current funding model, as well as the opportunities identified. And then I'll share the work that's already happening to develop cooperative solutions and when they will come to your board. So one of the strengths or the the big strength of the current funding model is that there are centralized services provided by W C C L S. Which, because they're delivered at scale, create efficiencies and cost savings for the system. Notable examples of these would be the digital collection, the centralized materials movement and sorting. As well as the shared software systems and I T infrastructure. There are also opportunities that we can address in the system, one of which is sustainable funding for base service levels. And the second is allocating that funding to partners with a clear and data-driven methodology. I want to thank your board for your leadership in seeing the need for this clear funding distribution methodology when the levy was last renewed in twenty twenty. And we drafted the I G A with our partners. Your board's commitment to assessing the funding distribution was included and memorialized in the current I G A. With our partners and laid the foundation for the journey that we are on together now. City managers and library directors are working with county staff facilitated by Marina. To develop a shared understanding of base service levels to recommend to your board. As well as some levy rate options to support those base service levels, and those recommendations will come to you January twenty eighth. In the spring, the cooperative will develop a recommended funding formula, criteria, and distribution methodology, which staff will bring to your board in June.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
In regard to base service levels. Are all the facilities, and I'm careful not to say cities and nonprofits, because they're different facilities. Are they physically capable, not only with the design of the facility, meaning the guys and scope. But with the equipment they have to really reach the same base level of service? Or isn't there always going to be a tug and pull of saying? Gee, I'm small, I can't afford that, so maybe you ought to give me more money so I can upgrade. Or I'm big, I want more, and so I should be funded more because I do provide. How do you ever get to a base level of service that is understandable and agreeable? When you have mega libraries, not New York standards or Chicago, but our standard. And very tiny libraries. How do you ever get there?
It's a great question, Commissioner Rogers, and it's one we're wrestling with right now as we work with our partners in November and December. Around what does base service levels look like, given the fact that Washington County is very diverse? And we have a small communities and large communities with all of their own unique facilities. And so I don't have an answer today for you on what exactly that.
Can I give you an answer?
Yeah, sure.
My mind.
Yeah.
Nobody else's, just mine. It was unfortunate when the library system was designed. That we didn't define what collections would look like. Because in the digital age, really, the only thing you need to 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 transfer back and forth is digital material. I mean, there are some borrowings, some of us are still of that age group, we want paper, but there's a lot of digital information. And libraries and a lot of communities have become community centers. I mean, they're not, a lot of people aren't there to check out books or materials, they're there to have meetings and. And have a place to get out of the rain and lots of, you know, use computers and lots of other things. Not critical of any of that, I think that's great. But it does present problems because there's never been definition of what are we really sharing? And and that would have been really simple way back when, that we just said, we don't know what it's going to look like in twenty, thirty, fifty years from now. But let's define what we want to agree that a common basis. And that's unfortunate. So I did I answer the question with an answer? Not exactly. I think that's what you have to get to.
Yeah, and I really appreciate your board's support for us having those conversations with our partners now. Because I think there's no time like the present to to talk about those really important questions. And I think all of the questions that that you as a board and commissioners and briefs are surfacing. Are the exact same questions that we're wrestling with our, we're wrestling with together with our partners and that our consultants have also identified. So to me, that speaks to a lot of alignment. Among everybody in the process that we all recognize we have the same questions and we're working together to find answers.
I think as we go through this report, it's, it was so insightful to me to see the data that's. I think as we go through this report, it's, it was so insightful to me to see the data that's presented in relationship to what our state is now and what, you know, when, when we were establishing a lot of the guidelines, it's, the world's changed, but our, but our communities have changed and our operating philosophies have changed too in different locations. So it's, this whole current state is gonna lead us to a better alignment and understanding.
Look, I was just gonna add that when I, when I was at the last forum where they were working on this question, we certainly don't have an answer today, but I was impressed by the libraries really thinking, the individual librarians in cities were thinking about it as a system. And so they weren't necessarily thinking, well, my library can't do this base service all of the time or to the level I'd like to do it, but is there a way that we could either centralize some things? Or is there a way that maybe I could partner with my neighboring library to meet this base level of service? So they're still defining what that is, but I, I was impressed that they were thinking on that sort of systems level of versus just what my library can do. So that gave me some hope that we'll get there.
Absolutely. We talk a lot about wearing your cooperative hat when we're in those conversations and thinking about the, the system level. That's how we find. I'm gonna move to the next kind of target area, which is service. All right. So one strength of the current service model is, like I shared in the last slide, those centralized services also create funding efficiencies, but they also create service improvements in that because those services are delivered at scale, they do create a consistent experience for user, for users. So notable examples of these centralized consistent services are things like the digital collection, our shared website, catalog and events calendar. Those are all strengths that were identified. Another strength of our current service model is that because the libraries are operated independently, they are able to deliver services that are really responsive to their local community's needs. There are also service opportunities that we can address, one of which would be to potentially centralize more services to deliver them at a scale that would reduce costs for the system overall and create more consistency of service. Another opportunity lies in establishing a base service level so that there is a consistent baseline of service and access for all community members regardless of which library they're using. And so Marina and Company is currently leading staff, including W C C L S staff, library directors, nonprofit leaders and city managers through a process to evaluate which services could be delivered at scale to reduce costs and increase, increase consistency. This work would be incorporated into a shared understanding on that base service level recommendation, which would come to your board in January, along with those potential levy rates.
Could I ask a question here and pause here to make sure I'm on the journey? So with this, with service, there, it sounded to me like there is a common set, as you described around that the, the full cooperative has, whether it's W C C L S or, or common base across all parties of the catalog and the events calendar, sort of a, I don't want to use the word minimum, base is really good. So, and, but you're all, and the project is doing additional opportunistic work, which is great for the now time period and looking out into the future to see what additional might be included in that base to increase efficiency and reduce costs and maybe some other things, who knows? So that that will be, instead of the base of January 2024, if I could call it that, will become the base for whatever Ju- July 1st, 2026, when the new levy starts, right? And then, so that's sort of what I call the cooperative set. And then there are the, the party unique ones, participant unique ones. That's, I didn't mean party, participant, where, as you say, they're responsive to their specific community. Am I getting it right?
Yeah, I think that is one way to, absolutely to conceptualize the work that's happening right now.
Okay. Thank you. I needed to confirm that I had the model right. That's all. Thank you.
We talked, okay. So the last focus area in reviewing the current state is governance. I think the primary strength of the current governance model is that our partners, because they are independent entities, either a city or a nonprofit, are able to make operational and policy decisions that reflect their local priorities and resources. At the same time, because the cooperative is composed of 13 different agencies working together, county, nine city and three nonprofits to deliver services, this also creates some opportunities for us to address. One of these is to clarify operational decision-making processes for the cooperative. I want to emphasize that your board remains the governing board for the cooperative and the final decision-makers on politis, policy decisions. When I'm talking about decision-making here, it's really on that day-to-day operational level. And those decisions impact the consistency of service delivered to our community members. And for those day-to-day operational decisions, there are opportunities to clarify and streamline that decision-making process within our cooperative. In a similar vein, there is an opportunity to increase the mutual accountability for the services and funding we all contribute to the cooperative to deliver library service to our community. The cooperative will be working to develop solutions to address these opportunities. And the solutions would take the form of a recommended, of recommended governance improvements that would be integrated into the next I G A under government agreement, which would be in place July 26th to June 2031. And staff would bring these shared recommendations to your board in September of 2025.
I think there's another strength that, you know, I don't participate deep down in libraries. This is where it's important that I'm on the journey in, in work sessions. But this model of having a cooperative that is built on relationships and why collaboration is key, you touch on it a little bit under funding and service. But to me, it comes through as well as a standalone strength that not only, as you have it where the partners are able to make those localized, but because of the level of thoughtfulness that goes into maintaining the relationship to make this work, it's why you're able to, and, and why we're fortunate that you're managing W C C L S and so committed to the success of the nine cities and the three nonprofits that maintain, two of them maintain multiple sites, right? It's the, the strength of commitment to the partnership is really enables, it's because of that strength, that's why you're able to see future opportunities.
I think you bring up a good point and maybe.
Never let the relationships die.
Well, and the celebration of the, the celebration and, and calling out of the strength of the relationship will help us as we move forward through the process too. Because I'm sure as we go through this process, there might be a little burr periodically. So I think that's a good point to talk about the relationship positively in the beginning.
Thank you. Yeah, that's gonna be a little bit of air beneath the wings for the cooperative as we continue to, to wrestle with these hard questions, but knowing that we can, we can definitely make it better and work together. That's part. All right. So this is the last slide. Thank you. We continue to be thankful for your board's leadership and support on this journey to develop shared solutions. And I think that the work is going well with our partners and we are excited to return to your board with that first set of solution recommendations in January. This time I'm gonna pause for any additional questions or if you have any further direction for staff.
I have one, but I'll let the others know.
Well, those two are liaisons, so why don't the three of us go?
Okay.
And they'll help us figure out where we went wrong.
One of the things that happened way back in 1985 is that we came up with a strategic plan. And this board, current board, went through that again this last year and refined it, but many of the principles are the same. And one of the principles is that wherever you live, no matter who you are, you're gonna get a level of service from the county. Where am I going with that? Well, three of us here represent large swatches of areas that don't have libraries in them. They're called rural areas. And as we initiate broadband throughout the county, and there's, some of our members have been large advocates for that and rightly so. There's gonna be a need to have collection opportunities for those who don't just have a physical area in their city. And I come from cities, I raised money to get the Tiger Library and my 12 libraries, I've been through that process a lot. But there are rural areas who are never gonna have that. And I don't understand exactly who their advocate is in all this, how that's gonna be attended. Because we talk about the cities and the nonprofits. But after all of this gets settled, who's there? What, what are we gonna do to make certain that their level of service, talking about levels of service, is just as high in conformance with our strategic plan if somebody sits in the city?
I think that your, this comment is like a great example of being the advocate for the, the rural population. I think it's also something we're considering a lot, because there are areas of the county that aren't currently well-served. And then, like you said, the issues with broadband access and things like that is something that we're thinking about a lot. And so there are some service ideas that we're batting around right now as we are in the solution creation space to kind of think about what does it mean to, to serve those rural residents?
Thank you for saying that. And I don't ask questions. I don't have some kind of answer back. And my answer is, is if Jerry's out in District Four, I'm District Three, or then Jason and Catherine represents all of those areas, that we have a voice and that we consider how we're going to deliver digitally over broadband access, a level of service that you'd get the same in Hillsborough, Beaverton, Tiger, Forest Grove, 12 and Truro. I mean, they're gonna get the same opportunity. They won't have a physical building, but they're gonna get the same level. And I hope, and, and why am I droning on? But because I won't be here in then 25, when you're discussing all this, hoping that they don't get forgotten. And I take it there are two members and then Jason's hearing me, so I suspect that he's probably gonna be advocating for that as well. I just hope that's on the agenda list of things that we all consider.
Isn't there something more though, than just digital delivery? And I have to frame it with a question because I'm not 100% sure. I seem to recall that there is the mailing of materials.
Yeah.
The physical mailing of materials as well, plus some large format. There's some collection beyond just digital. There's some physical collection that W C C L S, the cooperative, means.
That's absolutely right. That's a good idea.
So when, when you go through the, this is the current state report. And if it isn't covered here already for what the cooperative has, for those aspects I just touched on, it will be helpful to me at least, and maybe to Jason too, because it'll be happening with the turn of the new year to see that base articulated as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for raising it. Commissioner Fai?
Yeah, I can, I can go next. Thank you, Lisa, for your great presentation. I had my briefing with you on Friday, so all this information is pretty fresh. And I appreciate your leadership and I appreciate you answering my questions on Friday. I don't really have other than the notes I took, but I do have a couple of comments or a few comments in the three areas that you called out. In terms of governance, I want you and the community members to know that I'm committed to support an inclusive and transparent governance model that ensures all voices are represented and empowered in shaping the future of library services. And this goes to what, Commissioner Rogers, you were speaking to about rural communities. And then in terms of funding.
Wait, wait. How does that, as measured by how? That sounds like a great goal, but how will you be able to evaluate if that is achieved or not?
Well, for me, I will know what you come forward to recommend in terms of a policy direction when it comes to the board in terms of governance. So I really look forward to a, a governance models that ensures all the voices are represented that you have considered and, and that people are empowered in how they shape their library services and governance. So that's what I look forward to. When you come back to the board, suggest a model of governance to adopt in 2026, that's what I'll be looking forward to. I think when, when you did your strengths and weaknesses and opportunities, I think that was something that was addressed, you know, centering the voices of all represented community members. Now, moving on to funding. Funding, you know, I believe in equitable funding that meets diverse community needs and enables every partner to deliver impactful library services. So again, when you come back to the board, those are the things that I would be looking forward to in, in, in terms of the decisions that I'll be making. You know, how does this funding model really address these commitments and values? This is speaking to my own values. Now, moving on to services, when it comes to services, you have me fully engaged to support a future policy that provides consistent, accessible and responsive library services that again supports community and their diverse needs. So those are what I will be looking forward to. And Commissioner Rogers, I can put on my calendar to call you to come and testify if these needs are not met or are not fully, but I'm fully confident in the leadership structure in Washington County that these voices will be considered, you know, our comments and, and questions and when you come back. I have no doubt that, and if you do miss it, this is why we're here. So.
Well, I'll say, Commissioner Fai, I think you'll find the next phase a bit of a challenge because you used a word that I don't believe we are on course to achieve. We are not putting together a model where across the system of 13, everything is consistent. Rather that there is a base and then each of the partners can choose to build above the base or not. And we're going from a current base to a next cycle base. So I just wanna flag that. Also.
Fairhearted. And if I may correct that, because it does sound like you're making it sound like I said one size fits all.
No, you said consistent.
Right. And your comment made it sound like one size fits all. So I will repeat for now, just so we're on the. So I will support a future policy direction that provides consistent, accessible and responsive library services that support our community and the diverse needs of our community. So this isn't a one-size-fits-all. Obviously, where one library is located, will have a different needs, but it needs to be accessible and it needs to be consistent and it needs to be responsive to the community needs. So that's where I was going with it. Not that all the library cooperative will have a one consistent process and, and service when it comes to service provision. So just wanted to put that on the record for clarification.
So for the purposes of the board discussions and having common definition, when it comes to equity and diversity, and those of us who were here on the board with the last cycle experienced the need. experienced the need to advance equity in this current cycle that we're in and doing the assessment, which is why we approved the IGAs, we set the direction and approved them. The level of service for diversity across our communities, there will be a common base. But once again, each partner can choose to go above that. That is why the word consistent is fraught for confusion, which is why I pointed it out. It isn't... It is not a word that will serve us well as we move forward in our future definition. So, but I laid that out for the board.
I think what's fair to say is that there will be autonomy for the individual partners.
I like the word "which" autonomy. Yeah, very well said.
The other thing is, with regard to the diversity, as mentioned, you've had over eighteen thousand voices participating in this current process, which is the highest level that we've seen in recent years. So I think we do have quite the diversity of voices that are participating in this. And we should feel good about that already.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much. The... I was, I'll go as one of three who's not a liaison. I really appreciate how, after my briefing, you updated the presentation set so that I, I'm grasping this better. I'm grateful for the two liaisons that are going through all of this because I can't quite capture the data in my thinking, given the current state. So this is where for the next major milestone that will come to us the first of the year, whether, maybe it just needs to be in my individual briefing, just of reference back to here's how we've mined data from the current state. And it's being encompassed into the new base definition or is taken care of or can be addressed through the participant level. I'm, I'm open to that, totally open to that. But to put it differently, I'm not following all of the current state information to the degree that I'm relying upon you, just so you know. I'm not on top of all the data.
I think there is a lot of data, and we talked about it in our meeting a couple weeks ago. And Lisa provided a lot of information, but at the same time, so when we start getting down into the deep weeds of it, there's, there's a lot of variables that go into this. And so that's what we're gonna be looking forward to, probably in January, when the information comes back. As we're, we'll get down into the second, third knuckle, so to speak, and see all of that. Because the, it's not, when Roy talks about a base service and services out in the rural areas and all those kinds of things, it makes things even more complex on how do we go about doing this? I'm thinking of the Banks Library that is easily smaller than half this room. And, and how they, they still have a book sale and they still have lots of functionality to it.
A scene catalog. Yeah, they have a scene catalog. So cool.
And, and it's, they've done a very good job, you know, of doing some fundraising and adding some improvements to their library. So the communities really get engaged in their libraries, but at the same time, WCCLS has to be able to provide the base. And then I think that's where we're looking at. The cost of providing services vary hugely between our libraries. And we've gotta try and get, kind of get a handle on that as well. So we've got a lot of work to do, but it's pretty exciting. It's pretty interesting. And I think the further we get into it, the more, the more difficult it becomes to find a common theme, I guess. So as to Commissioner Fai said, it's not one-size-fits-all. Certainly, we're gonna have to come up with some creativity to this. But we are looking for the base. And certainly, the contrast between the Beavertons and the Hillsborough libraries to a Banks Library, that's a, that's a big spectrum.
I'd also like to just make a comment to the three of you. And that is that in going through the data that we went through and, and working with Lisa, with Marnie, I am so impressed with Marina and company and how, how they have turned this data to come up with some really insightful views of our system and how in turn, Lisa has been able to talk to the two of us about what it means. We've been able to provide questions and feedback, so it's a pretty iterative process. But I am also impressed with the innovative nature of Lisa and the partnership about how do we solve this problem and the commitment to the, to equity and to the future. So my comfort level is high. And I, I just wanna tell you right now, the, it's not just an information dump that people are going, okay, thanks, put that on the shelf. It's really being utilized and the boots are muddy in data.
And I think this is, that will help us in the, the next milestone presentation to really have a section that talks about equity and diversity in our community as well as how between that next milestone and the January, how the funding piece works. And I say this especially because I committed us to look at that. After, this was before the IGAs were even completed for the current cycle. The then-city manager of Cornelius tried to, or made a request that I sponsor the board changing the funding allocation because of the level of diversity in the community. And I brought it here. We stood by what the voters had just adopted in May. This was in the fall, summer and fall. He then turned around and in twenty twenty-two, expressed publicly and through a letter to the editor that I did something other than what I actually did. I committed us to look towards that in this cycle. And so he broke his ICMA ethics in twenty twenty-two and then again, most recently. So it's on him, but I have definitely followed through on my commitment to this governance and funding library cycle in advance of our upcoming referral. And it's just a commitment to equity, diversity, and the cooperative. Thank you. So that's it for our library topic. At this junction, we take a break for fifteen minutes. So we'll see everyone back here at twenty-five minutes before the hour. Thank you.
Like the smell of this, it isn't.
Welcome back from break. Commissioner Willie is entertaining us with his blueberry bar. His lemon bar. Alrighty, we're going to get right into our next topic before we have our lunch break. Maybe we'll be able to advance board communication before lunch as well, given that we're 25 minutes ahead of schedule. So Raleigh Hills Town Center, woo-hoo, take it away.
Great, thank you Chair. I'm Stephen Roberts, Director of Land Use and Transportation, and I'm joined by Aaron Wardell, our Assistant Director. Today, we wanted to bring this forward to you. I believe Chair, actually you were the one who had suggested that we do a briefing on this topic a while back, and so it's taken us a little while. Taken us a little while to get it on the schedule, but the timing feels right to bring the topic forward. So as you're aware, and Aaron will talk a little bit further in the presentation. There's been a lot of interest in the community around this intersection, obviously for a very long time, always been here for 40 years of it.
Yeah, at least.
And with the recent proposal to redevelop the Alpenrose Dairy Site, which is in Portland but close to this intersection, that's generated a new round of interest in seeing what the future holds for this location. There's also the opportunity right now of available funds through the MSTIP Large Project Match Fund, specifically to do some work around this intersection. To try to help alleviate some of the longstanding concerns that we hear from the community there. I have the clicker right here. Just a really quick overview, what we want to cover today, just a little bit of an overview and history of the area, that covers land use and transportation planning, and then some potential next steps for discussion with the board. Then the discussion prompt that we've provided here was really just if you have additional information needs on this topic about past or future planning work at this location. And then we just look forward to a discussion with you at the end. With that, I'll turn it over to Aaron.
Thanks Stephen. So as Stephen alluded to, this is a pretty complicated site, and when we start to look at the governance of this particular area, both in terms of land use and transportation systems, we know that we have a lot of partners who we need to work with as we move forward. So what you're seeing on this graphic is the county boundary line, that's the red line running north-south, so this is very close to the edge of the Washington County-Malt numa county boundary. What you see in pink is the city of Portland, as your board is aware, but community members may not be, there are parts of Washington County that are in the city of Portland, and so we have a few pieces that go over the line. The area shown in that greenish color are city of Beaverton, but the intersection area itself is still an unincorporated Washington County. When we look at the road jurisdictions, what you see in the orange color is ODOT jurisdiction, that's Beaverton-Hillstill Highway, which is still a state highway. The roads in dark gray are county jurisdiction, and so that's Olson and Dogwood at the intersection, and then the roads that are in that brownish color are city of Beaverton, so we really have a lot going on here. The area is covered by the Urban Planning Area Agreement that we have with the city of Beaverton, so this graphic shows in gray the areas that are already incorporated into the city of Beaverton, and then the light greener areas that are covered by that Urban Planning Area Agreement, and so we envision that this area will someday be within the city of Beaverton as annexations occur. This area is very constrained by some environmental resources. We have floodplain running just to the east of the intersection and corresponding riparian areas, and so this is something important to keep in mind as we think about future capital projects and additional complications that we may have. There also may be limitations on some of the redevelopment potential, given the amount of constraints that are out here. So this graphic is showing the multiple closely spaced intersections that we're dealing with, and this is generally what is causing the problems. In addition to the five intersections that are marked by the yellow star shapes on here, we have over 20 commercial driveways in the vicinity of the intersection as well, so there are a lot of different conflict points for travelers using all modes through this area. So this slide shows a land use planning summary for this area. As you can see, the corridors have a lot of the pink color, which is our commercial business district plan designation for Washington County. We also have some of our higher density residential zones, R24 and R15 around the corridor area, and then further out, it's a lot of our lower density, single family of R5, that's that lighter yellow color. We are going to be talking about the Raleigh Hills Town Center planning in the next couple of slides, our requirements for the climate-friendly and equitable communities work, and then the proposed Alpenrose Dairy Site redevelopment. So, the wayback machine, in 1995, Metro adopted the 2040 land use vision. All of the local jurisdictions at that time kicked off extensive land use planning for a variety of areas, and so Raleigh Hills Town Center was one of those areas identified at that time. Beaverton-Hillstill Highway, Olson Road, and Shoals Ferry Road were also all designated as corridors, and so that's intended to be streets that are served by transit service and have high density of both employment and residential. There are areas that are also major transportation routes for people traveling in all different ways, and for our goods, there tend to be large trucking routes as well. Land around the intersection here, being designated as a town center means it's intended to provide service to tens of thousands of people within a two to three mile radius. We would expect to see one to three story buildings for employment and housing. Town centers also generally have a strong sense of community identity and are well-served by transit, or should be well-served by transit.
Curiosity, all of us lived, all board members said we lived in Washington County since 1995?
I wasn't even in America.
Yes. Or did you know of? And I've lived right next to that intersection for a lot of those years.
Barely born.
I was in the third grade.
You were on the Board of Commissioners.
I was in third grade when he was.
Child prodigy.
So a lot of planning took place in the late 90s. In 1998, and then until 2000, Washington County worked on a town center plan for this area. That was brought to the board in 2000, and it ended up being rejected by the Board of Commissioners at that time due to community and business concerns. A lot of the concerns raised at that time were around concerns about increase in density. The intersection was already a challenge, the environmental constraints were already known to the community, and so a lot of those concerns were brought up at the time, and so the Board of Commissioners decided that it wasn't the right time to adopt the boundary and the corresponding town center plan designations.
It was a right-of-way act, which is a lot of things.
Yeah, there were a lot of things already identified as challenges at the time. So instead, what the board did is they rejected.
It's gotten so much easier since then.
And there was a congressman who lived right down the road from that, remember? If you didn't know that, you weren't here.
Who was that?
David Blue.
And I believe Governor Attia lived in the neighborhood, just north of the intersection as well. Governor Attia.
Well, we had a lot of very engaged and connected community members at the time in the planning efforts, is my understanding of what happened.
You're the best, Aaron.
Instead of adopting that ordinance, the board adopted another ordinance, ordinance 561, which instead of designating the boundary and the town center land uses, adopted a generalized town center area of interest. And so this is a way of us saying, we did some planning work, we're not ready to do the full town center planning effort at this time, and so we're going to flag it as something that we will deal with in the future. So that is what is shown on this graphic with the pink hatched marks over that generalized area.
Okay, pause, let me go back to that slide. Before you fast forward to 2020, Stephen, could you speak to what occurred during 2010?
Yeah, I think Aaron's gonna cover that on the next slide.
Nice handoff.
We can do that on the next slide, sure. So in 2010, before we get to 2020, Metro Council updated the Urban Growth Management Functional Plan. And within the Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, the new requirement was for jurisdictions to finish their town center planning, adopt their boundaries and their corresponding land uses, before they would be eligible to receive regional planning funds in order to do any work in an area. So Washington County, had we applied for regional funds to do town center planning in Raleigh Hills, would not have been eligible, given that update to Metro's plans. We would have needed to do the work of adopting the boundary before we'd be able to receive that funding. So Metro was thinking ahead about how jurisdictions still needed to complete some of the town center planning. This is not the only one that wasn't adopted as a town center, and so there was already some thought given to next steps for moving forward with this planning.
I'll add to that, that the Metro Council, by virtue of ordinance 10-1244B, which Mr. Roberts found for me, he'll have to teach me how to access TRIM externally, because I've never figured it out externally. This is the map that was adopted, which includes the town center designation, not the area. And according to Exhibit G compliance, I think since 2010, the county's been out of compliance since, so no harm, no foul, since we haven't sought and achieved any funding in recent time. But as soon as I looked at this material in the packet, I reached out to Mr. Roberts and was like, wait a minute, you can't rewrite history. Something happened in 2009, 2010, and he surfaced it all. I'm really impressed, thank you.
Well, I'm just incredibly impressed by your recall, yeah.
So one of the things that reminded all of us that some additional things had happened between 2000 and 2020 was the governor's executive order in 2020 to take action on climate change. And so the governor directed all state agencies to take any and all actions to reduce and regulate greenhouse gas emissions. The Department of Land Use, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, took the initiative to start rulemaking that they called the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking, that ended up resulting in the Land Conservation Development Commission adopting new transportation planning rules. The updates to the transportation planning rule included pretty extensive land use requirements in addition to transportation requirements. One of those land use requirements was for all of the metropolitan planning organizations in the state to finish their land use planning for areas like town centers. So within the metro area, it was interpreted as the identified town center and regional center. So other MPOs in the state of Oregon have to take the work to identify what their town center areas are, but in metro, we already knew because it was based on 2040. Commissioner Trace, if you have a question on that?
No, thank you.
So the CFAC rules do require Washington County to adopt the boundary for the Raleigh Hills Town Center, as Chair Harrington alluded to, we were out of compliance by not doing that work. But the requirement is simply to adopt the boundary. We don't have to do any other zoning work or planning work or community engagement work, we simply have to, we think, apply that boundary within our plans, and so it'll be relatively straightforward for us to comply with that. Again, it's not the only one, this just happens to be the only one that we think Washington County has to take action on, there are others that will be acted on by the cities within Washington County.
And to do so within the terms of the PAA, right?
Yes. So I want to transition now and talk about much more recent history, which is the proposal to redevelop the Alpenrose Dairy Site. So the city of Portland has jurisdiction over this large site. There is now an approved development application, it was approved on Friday by Portland's hearings officer, to redevelop the 51 acres into 263 new residential uses. This area is within the city of Portland and within Malt numa County, so we don't have any land use authority over this site at all. However, it is so close to Washington County and to some of our intersections, that it is something that we've been involved in the conversations about, and we've heard a number of concerns from community members about. Go ahead.
Always been curious. How, I knew it wasn't exactly contiguous, but how close is, I've never really understood where exactly where that boundary was.
Between the counties?
Between, yeah, between that particular property.
The county boundary is the line. It is their property line, right?
That west line. That west line.
Is that, isn't there housing or something right in between this and that, that road? Right here, see that little stretch?
That's Beaverton where there's housing, right there.
Right.
On that side.
Yeah, so there's house, so maybe a house. I don't know how to.
And we come back up to the other graphic that showed.
That's what I'm showing him.
Okay.
Yeah. I was just curious the distance.
There we go.
Go, keep going. Keep going. There you go. Nope, that's the site. There are no houses currently on the site. There are houses.
Right there?
That, where the drive, where this street is where their driveways come in. So the county line is their back.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know. I thought it had butts, so.
Those are butted.
It does, so.
It butts their backyard.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was.
And those houses are mostly in the city of Beaverton, although there is an area that's in the city of Portland in Washington County that also backs up to the site, so.
And that's between Olson and the county line.
Correct.
Yeah, so what she was just speaking to is down here, because this is pink, that's in the city of Portland.
Yeah, that and the Barnes property up where the Peter Corps are, that's what drove the county district board, current run, to pass. We were opposed to Portland coming over the line anymore. We were hearing lots of complaints and saying, stay on that side. That was all of that action. I thought there was some abutment going, but I couldn't remember exactly. Been a long time.
Yes, it's very complicated jurisdictionally. Let me catch up to where we were.
That's slide thirteen.
Thirteen. There we go, okay. So the traffic analysis that was conducted as a part of the development proposal indicated very little impact on the intersection of Beaverton, Hillsdale, and Olson and Shoals. That's because while this seems like a very large redevelopment, that is a very busy intersection. And so it's difficult for even this size of a development to really impact an ODOT highway in that location with that many streets and that much activity.
Is that impact only to Beaverton, Hillsdale, or does that include impact to down through Vermont to Olson?
There are other impacts on some of the other intersections that are more, that are in higher scale and higher magnitude. When the development proposal was approved by the hearings officer in Portland on Friday, they did impose conditions, and some of those conditions were to resolve some of those transportation impacts, things like building a portion of the Red Electric Trail, building out some of the needed sidewalk connections on some of the adjacent and connecting streets. There's a crosswalk improvement identified. And so the developer is being required to mitigate some of those more direct impacts of the site. But Beaverton, Hillsdale, Olson, and Shoals is not enough of an impact to require them to do anything.
Could you back up on that? Because you mentioned hearings officer decision Friday, yet the slide also talks about hearing officer decision tomorrow.
With, it was due by tomorrow, but the hearings officer made the decision on Friday.
Okay.
And we haven't had time to review that extensively, so we just took a quick look at a high level summary of it.
Not a problem, but the bottom line is that the hearings officer did approve it with a myriad of conditions.
Yes.
Okay.
Complete answer. You may not know this, but Jason's going to know that. All of that area has used sewage facilities that run through Washington County. Do we know what that one's gonna do? Because that's been a huge problem down in failed pump stations. They have this bright idea to pump things back uphill, which isn't the best issue.
No creek pump site.
I do know that Clean Water, oh, I was gonna say, I know Clean Water Services has been engaged in the review of the project as well.
So they may be pumping through Washington County, because that's how they kind of get their sewage. So we may have an interest in all of that as work.
Yeah, I honestly have not paid a lot of attention to that side of the proposal myself.
I understand, but it does, we don't want any more overflows, Jason, because you get a lot of comments.
We can follow up with Clean Water Services on that question and see what they, what they know.
Good to know.
We can do that. So we've.
Can you go back?
Yes.
Because this is proximate to so many, at least three of our districts, and because of the portion to the east, a majority of it being city of Beaverton, can you, do you know what conditions may or may not have been imposed relative to traffic management during construction on the Alpenrose site and/or after construction on the Alpenrose site? And if you don't know, if you could follow up by an email to all of us, that would be most helpful.
We will follow up on that. I did see a condition relating to coordination with the city of Beaverton, but I don't recall if it was specific to during the construction phase or for future connections. We'll follow up on that.
And then back on the indicating little impact on Beaverton, Hillsdale, Olson, Shoals intersection, Shoals Ferry, excuse me. By what I heard you say is because the intersection is as busy as it already is, that the traffic analysis can't differentiate between, and a little bit more on a tough situation, or is able to say it tips the scale over to a next gradient. Am I correct in understanding that the gradient is already indicating it's a really difficult intersection that would benefit from some additional attention, and we just can't attribute any further increasing of that scale to this specific development? Am I getting it right?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for that, because I did it for that piece, yeah.
I think this summary leads people to believe that it is little impact at all versus little impact on an already, I don't know what the right adjective is, I need you to insert it. So if you could improve that sentence and re, and re-publish the slides, because I think there are community members who will pick that statement out.
Thank you. And I agree with that, because I know that we'll get calls.
And also, well, it's not solely one commissioner.
No, I know.
And also the last statement too.
We'll fix that with the.
Yeah, this is really an information-rich presentation, and I appreciate your helping us weigh through it. I also examined the, after the summer community meeting, I also waited through the Metro Council District areas, and it was quite revealed. So that would be yet again another complicated overlay.
And I think just back on, before we move on, the, a good way to think of the impact of Beaverton, Hillsdale Highway, it's sort of like a drop in a bucket. So there's an impact, but the cumulative effect of this impact on such a, such a full and busy intersection is relatively limited, so.
Adds another ripple.
Yeah.
That's why I want to make sure that way, it is the black and white.
Yep, good point, thank you.
Clear. Thank you very much.
We'll make those fixes and follow up with Clark Moss, getting that re-uploaded. Moving on to talk about transportation planning and some of the work that's happened in this area. So as Stephen talked about at the very beginning, we know that this has been a challenging intersection for probably as long as anyone can remember the area. In nineteen ninety-six, we did look at an intersection realignment possibility, and so this graphic shows what that could have looked like. And basically, what we're trying to do is split up those five intersection points that they're not all happening in such close proximity to each other. But this involves some pretty major realignments, and it's still not necessarily as clean as it would be if you were playing SimCity and laying out a perfect intersection, right? We're just very constrained in this area for a variety of reasons. So there were some benefits to doing this particular design approach. The increased intersection spacing, of course, helps traffic flow. There would be additional turn lanes that would also help traffic flow and prevent some of the queuing behavior that happens. And then we would also allow some of the turn movements that are not allowed today because the intersections are too close together. This would allow for some new traffic signals in the area. That could also help with the safety and slowing traffic down, and this could help reduce the number of crashes because there's less conflicting points close together. But there's some potential drawbacks. Right of way acquisition, of course, is a challenge. The wider streets could be challenging for pedestrians to cross, although I'd argue it would still be an improvement over what's out there today, even if it's a farther distance to walk. And then there could be an opportunity for higher vehicle speeds with the intersections split out. And so if there were crashes, they could be more severe. And that's something that we would have needed to take a look at before we move forward with this design.
Yeah, before we moved on, I did want to note, it's, it's called out in the memo that was attached to this item as well, but this is an intersection that has a relatively high number of crashes, but a relatively low frequency, thankfully, of fatal and severe injury crashes. So there are a lot of fender bender type crashes here at this intersection, and it is confusing, and so we understand that. So the, the purpose of this plan really was to try to create intersections that look more typical to what a driver is accustomed to seeing by removing some of the unique peculiarities at this intersection. And I wanted to note too, it wasn't specifically called out drawbacks, but a couple of other things just to keep in mind were that this, this would be a fairly impactful proposal. It required the demolition of at least a couple of business buildings, structures that are there, and that realignment of Olson Road, the new curved alignment to the right of that diagram also has a significant impact on some of the resource areas, environmental resource areas in the intersection here. So this is a, this would be a very challenging proposal to implement, and the costs are quite high for this, so.
So this is where I think this is another slide that I would ask you to do an update on, to include under potential drawbacks, what you verbalized here. Right of way acquisition impacting multiple local properties. Then another bullet around alignments, shown alignments impacting that. I think you included on that other slide, trying to use environmentally sensitive areas. I want to make sure that we just have a, an updated slide with twenty twenty-four comments on that realignment diagram, because no matter when, no matter who chooses to move forward with it, we need to do what we can now to have eyes wide open.
I have a question on this slide. We talked about the Alpenrose development having minimal impact on the current state. Do we know what the impact would be on this ninety-six proposal? Would it be greater, lesser? I'm just curious, because obviously that wasn't part of the equation in ninety-six.
That's a really interesting question. I don't know off the top of my head without doing the traffic analysis work or looking at it. My suspicion, though, would be that it, it would still be a drop in the bucket, because we would still have such congestion, traffic congestion happening in this area. We think things would flow better than they flow today if it were redesigned this way, but it would still be very congested.
And the reason I was, I'm asking the question is that you see Olson Road stop and not obviously enter Beaverton, Hillsdale, and that, that's where that.
It would wrap around, though. See, it's a realignment of Olson, that leg to the right. So it does look like it's a cul-de-sac, but it's because it's been realigned.
I, I, I understand. I'm just, I'm looking, I'm thinking about where Alpenrose is located in terms of access going west.
And how they would make that west movement. It could be split up between those two, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if they came north on Olson, though, it could be, the traffic movement could be split between the left and the right. And so that could be a different type of impact if we were to do the traffic analysis. But again, I'd say that two hundred and sixty-three housing units being redeveloped is not a huge number compared with the other amount of redevelopment that we're seeing in the general vicinity, you know, in your, the near future, most likely, so.
It's hard to keep that, you know, in mind. It seems like a lot.
It does seem like a lot for that one site, but when you think about the amount of especially multifamily development happening in Portland, it's, it's really a small number, and the amount of redevelopment we're seeing in Washington County as well.
In follow-up email to us, seeing this diagram and looking back at the prior maps, given that the, this doesn't show where Shattuck Road is, and there's a reliance upon Shattuck Road for some of this handling as well. Could you include in that email what requirements the developer has to make for any improvements expected in the future with regard to Shattuck Road?
We will.
That I think will be helpful in terms of the context, because when we're focusing just on the Washington County side, we're assuming, okay, it's all got to flow here, and it doesn't. Of course, there is some, hence why we're going over all of this.
And that's the same question about Vermont.
It involves a boundaries.
We'll, we'll confirm. My, my very high level understanding is that the city did not place a significant number of off-site transportation improvement conditions on the development. And again, I think it's just a function of the already high traffic volumes in the area.
But it causes me to wonder, since I haven't looked at this real closely, this it looks like Boundary Street is, oh, it's down there. Never mind. It looks like coming off of Boundary, there are two north legs that meet up with Beaverton, Hillsdale Highway. And I can't remember off the top of my head if those are signalized right now. And I wonder if the traffic impact shows that those intersections need to have some type of improvement.
And that's right where the Roche Nitzer Manor is, which is a very large rehab and, it's quite large there.
Yeah, we'll take a closer look at all of that and get more information too.
Thank you very much.
So moving on, in two thousand and eight, the county secured six million dollars to do some design work on Phase One of what this realignment would have been, which is moving Olson Road to the east. Phase One also included doing the replacement of the Olson Road Bridge over Fano Creek. And that Phase One design work did not use all of the funding. It was completed before all that six million dollars had been used. It's really weird to think about a time when we didn't spend all of the money, because things cost less than we expected them to. And that's how it used to go. And so there was about two point eight million dollars left, and that was reallocated towards the bridge reconstruction project. So the bridge reconstruction was completed using a combination of this remaining federal money along with misdebt money.
Oh, the federal money, so.
Yep.
That's correct.
Correct, yep. And so that bridge replacement construction was completed in twenty fifteen, but as you're all aware, the road was not fully realigned. So we replaced the bridge, but we would still need to do that realignment piece at the top in order to achieve the vision. So potential next steps are covered in the next few slides. So the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rules, as we talked about, do require us to establish the boundary in our comprehensive plan. That is a relatively, we expect that to be a relatively straightforward ordinance, and staff intend to file that in twenty twenty-five because we're required to by the state. And so that is something that will be reflecting in our planning work program. We bring it back to you in the summer, but we expect that ordinance will likely be underway at that time anyway. And we do have work program items already identified for compliance with state mandates like CFAC. And we do have work program items already identified for compliance with state mandates like CFAC. And the other potential item is for us to consider some kind of a grant in order to do some of the necessary land use planning that would be required before we can move into obtaining money to do any of the large infrastructure lifts that we would need to make in the area. This is where we end up a little bit high-centered in fixing something as complicated as this intersection because we do need to, we or somebody needs to update the land use plans that have been done for the area, consider things like community engagement for the community that lives there now because that's a very different community than who lived there in 1998 when the first town center planning work was done. We know there's environmental constraints, and so that would be a big part of any planning work that would be done. Market analysis, market feasibility is all very different condition than it was last time we looked at this area. And we could do preliminary engineering and confirm that our design still works. The board did identify this as one of the projects that would be eligible for the Mistip large project match, assuming that this would be a very large project lift, and we would need a relatively large local match. But we're not ready to apply for that infrastructure money until we have a better idea of if our design is still good to go and what some of the other conditions would need to be. And this is something that would need to be added to the future planning work program if the board wanted us to move forward with it. It's identified right now as a Tier Two task that we will get to if we finish everything in Tier One. That's not going to happen within the existing planning work program. We're pretty busy right now with a number of other items. Any questions on that slide? And if not, I think we're here for discussion slide.
So Slide 18 and 19 speak to future steps for the four of you who wants to start or stop.
I come in. Thank you, Erin, for the great presentation. I do agree that addressing the longstanding safety and congestion issue at this problematic intersection is vital. And given the Alpenrose community persistent voice concerning their concerning about their concerns about safety and traffic from nearby development, I think prioritizing intersection improvements and responsive planning is, I do believe that is priority. And whatever we can do to enhance safety and accessibility is really vital and crucial to this potential town center so that everyone can access this town center safely. I do have a couple of questions, and this is surrounding around, sort of grounded around the Alpenrose community concerns. I think every meeting I've had with the community, you've been there, so you're aware. But I did want to ask what specific design changes at the intersection would most effectively address the Alpenrose community's concern? Because this 1996 has been in place, and they are aware. But I'm wondering if you have a design in mind that would address their concerns around safety and traffic flow? That's question number one. I can pause, or?
Yeah, so I think that we, so the 1996 design is essentially adopted into our current transportation system plan as a future vision for that intersection. And that's why we started working towards it with that Phase One Bridge Replacement Project. If we were to go forward and seriously consider other infrastructure work, I think we would want to first take a look at that design and see if that still meets our goals. At the time, in 1996 and 1998, when we were doing the planning work, there were a number of businesses in the area. Some of those may not be operating anymore. They may be more interested in a right-of-way acquisition than they were back then. But it's just not a conversation we've had with the community that lives there today. And so it's something we probably would need to reconsider. I do think, though, at its core, separating out those conflict points and considering the access management solutions are going to be what improves safety for that area. So that's something we consider as a part of the design.
I just asked for a clarification, separating out the Alpenrose issue versus other issues, is that what-
No, just thinking about the Beaverton Hillsdale Olson side.
Okay.
Intersection specifically, physically separating.
Spreading out the spacing. And I would say we've looked at the 1996 plan, and it looks like a 1996 plan. It really wasn't reflective of what I think we might envision a town center looking like today. Much more pedestrian-focused with probably narrower streets, narrower pedestrian crossings, or narrower streets for pedestrians to cross. And so I think there's an interest in really revisiting the 1996 solution. We may walk away at the end of that evaluation and say, well, that really is the best solution, given all the many constraints that we're addressing on this site, but we think it's worth a relook.
I was appreciative, I did appreciate seeing the the next steps, being, one of them being reassessing the intersection realignment. So I really appreciated that part. The second question I have is about funding, obviously. And I'm wondering how we can leverage state or regional funding to prioritize immediate intersection improvements.
I would really be cautious about using immediate. I think there's very few things that can be done at this intersection that haven't been, that can be done quickly. Just given all the variety of challenges around this, securing the funding, doing the planning with community engagement work, finding the money to actually build whatever the result of that planning effort is, that is probably a 10- to 15-year timeline, I would say. I think just being realistic about how these things go and how long things take.
Thank you. It is a problematic road, or intersection, rather. The beginning of the year, I did a ride-along with the sheriff's office, and one of the call, the deputy responded was to actually, although not fatal, but at that moment, the call was a fatal response. So he had to do the sirens and speed through. And I don't know if we have any data because it's a very confusing intersection. And talking to some of the residents, one of the things they call out is, it's really confusing, nobody knows. And the call out, the day I did the ride-along, the two people that hit their car, both cars were totaled. But nobody was fatally hurt. People were able to walk and get a ride, and some used the Trimed to get to where they were going. But both people, and there were two in each car, were not from Oregon or from that neighborhood. In fact, one was visiting from another state, and then another was from Washington, doing business in Washington County, from Washington State. So I do think it's a, it is a very confusing, and I don't know if there's whatever funding rocks you can turn, I'll borrow our county administrators' terminology, whatever rocks we can turn to find some money because that immediate improvement is really needed. I hear you loud and clear. But whatever we can do to save lives in the meantime, it's really necessary. And whatever we can address that confusion, and I do think the confusion is because of the alignment. And so I'll just end right there to say, please do your magic and figure out what we can do in the meantime.
And I might tie a couple of threads together here, too. Because Beaverton Hillsdale is an ODOT-managed facility, it really complements the idea of a great streets program. And so I know that'll be an item for, hopefully, for discussion during the upcoming legislative session. We've been big proponents of a program like this that would help alleviate some of these needs where we have these state highways that have been largely neglected or under-invested in over a long period of time. And so that could also create yet another potential funding source to help with improvements, whether it be sort of near-term interim solutions, or perhaps, hopefully, the longer-term big fix.
But in terms of our transportation priorities for the state legislature for a transportation bill, we've prioritized the TB Highway Corridor Plan and the Aloha Town Center and the other town centers that are along TB Highway to be first. So this work session doesn't just advance this intersection over those others.
Correct. And I would add, we hear from Representative McLean regularly, who's co-chairing the Joint Committee on Transportation, that Back to Basics is really the number-one focus of the legislative package. And so I think there's going to be limited attention or funding available for enhancement projects as a result of this project. I think they're laser-focused on just solving ODOT's immediate maintenance and operational needs. But that said, let's be optimistic, and if we aren't successful this time, we keep building the case for the next legislative funding package in seven years or so.
Like you said, it's in the TSP. Other commissioners?
Yes.
Between 1997, I think, and 2001, in a family, in my family of four, there were four accidents, one person accounted for two of them in that intersection. And I was the one-
In that family cluster?
Yeah, in that family cluster. I did not have an accident.
No names on it.
But it was a little, and in those surrounding neighborhoods, as student drivers start out, it's kind of known as a rite of passage to some degree because it is so confusing, and it's difficult for everybody to navigate. I will say, I really appreciate the information about the Alpenrose development. That was a surprise to me in terms of the impact. So that was a pretty big aha for me today. And as you both know, this has been an intersection that I've been following for a long time. I support the moving to to adopt the Boundary for the Raleigh Hills Town Center. That's coming in the future. I think we need to move forward with that. I like the idea of looking toward the grant-funded work and doing what we can in that arena. And I also would ask, how does this fit into LUT's work plan and availability for work? That really wasn't discussed in this presentation.
And I think that would need to be part of a next step that we talk about at the beginning of next year.
That's fine, but I just want to call that out, that I recognize that this, that there is no, there is a bottom to the work levels here, and it's not an endless hole. So I recognize that as I say it, but I do like the idea of looking for grant-funded opportunities as well.
Checking in in January on the biennial work plan will be useful for the board.
I did forget one thing. I mentioned data, but I was wondering if there is data around the accidents that happen on that intersection? If we track their, where the drivers reside?
A lot of intersections.
A lot of intersections. That intersections, okay.
Yeah, yep, there's crash data statewide, and we can access that information and provide some reports. I will say, we at Washington County maintain what we call the Safety Priority Index System. There's this list. We update that every year, and it looks back at the most recent three, four years of available crash information. And I would say that these intersections are listed as separate, but they tend to fall within the top 10 to 15 on any given annual review cycle, just based on the number of crashes. But the crash data will give you some insights into the number of crashes overall, the, what are called PDO, property damage-only crashes, where, like a fender bender, for instance, how many injury, minor and major injury crashes, and then definitely fatality crashes are tracked.
Does it say anything about the driver? Like, where does that drive, what's the plate for the plate number, at least?
No. This is very much aggregated data at a pretty high level, so it's just going to be numerical information.
I have one question, too. Back on Slide 15. Crazy idea. We always call this kamikaze intersection, if everything was going crazy.
You do.
I thought, a lot of people have.
I refuse to call it that.
She does, too. Have we ever thought of, and it reminds me of Paris, where you have large roundabouts, or we have China where they have ring roads, I've seen those, too. Instead of taking that little hatch section out, leave it, and take out the section between, maybe that brown section and Beaverton Hillsdale, and make that a, like a huge roundabout with right ends and left ends. So nothing to say you couldn't develop it. You already have the infrastructure, it'd be a lot cheaper, you wouldn't have to build that new section. You just have a big ring road, and people could go in, and you could have the infrastructure in the middle, if I'm making sense to you. And you just have a continuous route, people could be routing in and out, rights and buffs in and new. I mean, we like roundabouts, they work. This is just a larger one with, in the middle of it, have a whole bunch of development, which you wouldn't displace a whole bunch of people, and they still get in because there are roads to get there. They just come in and they occupy the center of it. Have we ever looked at anything innovative and said, that would save a lot of money? That would accomplish the same thing.
We haven't touched it since 1996.
I've been picking at it.
Yeah, and I think some of those concepts were explored. We have not been able to get our hands on a detailed report that described in detail the options that were considered. But the report that we do have that references this, what was called the Preferred Alternative, did reference that things like roundabouts and other, there was an overpass kind of design considered. So there were a variety of interesting options that were evaluated, but that would be the focus of a future planning effort to really dive in.
Remember the latest number of dollars to fix this?
Huge.
Oh, it was-
Yeah, so the project, as you see it here, the brown indicated what was assumed to be a first phase. It was referred to as current phase in this diagram, but first-phase work. Our latest estimate of that is probably in the $120 million range, give or take. The blue work would have been future phase, and that's probably another $150 million.
So $270 million, you're talking about Mistip for a lot of years all over the county. I don't know, just, I know it sounds crazy, but instead of the hatch area, take out part of Beaverton Hillsdale, make it a large ring, and you might find that it works functionally just as well. Solves a lot of your problems, you don't have the costs that you're talking about. So just crazy ideas for the future. That's all.
With planning money, what we would probably start with is an investigation of what's our lowest cost solution here. And that would be minor realignments, not like what you're seeing up here as our first pass at that. But we also could get to that point and do some of that work and find that it doesn't actually fix many of the problems, and we're still stuck with some problematic intersections. So we just don't know yet because we haven't had a chance to do that work.
Thanks.
What do they call it, armchair quarterbacking?
Yeah, it's a good thing sometimes, whiteboard exercises, yeah.
Anything else, Commissioner Rogers?
Not at all.
Commissioner Willie?
Yeah, this has been an interesting conversation. I know this intersection because I used to have to take my grandson through there to get to his school. I think, yeah, Roy, you talk about a roundabout like that reminds me of when I was in Berlin a long time ago, and there was a giant mongus roundabout. It took me four trips around there to get the exit that I wanted, and those people drove fast, so.
They all got there.
That might work in there, but that would be an interesting, interesting project.
So I'll follow up as last. I have a request for a new slide. Could you please take this slide, just with the roads, none of the call boxes, and overlay it with the zoning map on Slide 15 and create a new Slide 16? I think that is vital because what it shows is the very significant impact to all of the existing land uses, and more importantly, the property owners. What I don't look forward to is the fallout that we're going to potentially receive. The fallout that we're going to potentially receive from this work session. As a result of all of our armchair quarterbacking. So um, with regard to next steps, I support. Following through on complying with the climate friendly and equitable communities. Work in twenty twenty-five. Towards that end, I think we should leverage the work of ordinance five thirty-five, that boundary. But more importantly, my next step is we need to follow our own strategic plan update. As well as the adopted UPAA and transfer. The town center and this whole intersection work over to our partner, the city of Beaverton. And to have the county work as a good county partner in that future effort. A means that you are very good at, that we have seen time and time again. But that will very much be a integrated land use and transportation transformation. And it will need to be visioned very carefully, concept planned very carefully. Uh, and then. Implemented very judiciously. Because of phase one, to use some of the phraseology used here, a phase one only makes sense if you have a phase two. Otherwise, we, we experience what we've experienced many times before. Uh, over these last thirty-five years. Uh, but I think we should not, in our work, in satisfying the climate friendly and equitable communities. Uh, we should not do that solely on our own. I think we need to lean in to this opportunity and engage with not only the city of Beaverton staff. But also management as well as their elected body, the full elected body. With regard to this opportunity. And part of this is because I look comprehensively and see the other town centers that are within UUAs. And we need to make sure that we can satisfy. The requirements today and with the climate friendlies, equitable communities with those multiple town centers. And then into the future. So I'm really trying to ensure that you are best positioned. Because there is a huge bulk of the UUAs that I don't see changing for the next twenty, thirty years. There are certain parts that I can, certain things I can envision out another fifty years, but um. My trained eye can see out twenty, thirty years, but not too well beyond that. Because I think there are some global shifts that are going to impact our community more than, than beyond that thirty year timeframe. That's where I stand. Which leaves me to the question of what do you see yourselves taking away from today? Or as direction, or do you want to just take this discussion? Update the presentation as we've talked about, informed by the hearings officer, the requests that I just made. To be clear on a, an overlay, um, and then come back to us with uh. Here, here's the next steps. Here's our plan for a plan. We'll come back to the work plan, for example, in January slash February, whenever that seems meaningful. What, what would you like to do, Ms. Angie? And Mr. Roberts, Ms. Wardell?
So thank you, Board, for the rich discussion and your thoughts. I would ask that staff be able to um, huddle after this conversation. I see uh, Mr. Roberts and Ms. Wardell frantically writing a lot of notes. So.
Yeah.
Um, given the breadth of feedback, um, curiosity, wonderings from the board, let's, uh, we'll meet as staff and then determine next steps. Follow up with your board in an email.
Yep.
To document what those next steps will, will be based on our discussion.
And with that. Can you insert a slide after the discussion slide or? Make some note on this slide that you'll be figuring out those next steps. And then after you have that email, then we can insert it in some way so that the community can be on that journey with us.
So as um, in this work session, we are referring to an updated document to be uh, made still. For, for the record, we will email that updated slide deck to the board and then I will ask uh, Clerk Moss to um. Add it to this agenda packet in addition to the, the PowerPoint that we see here. So you'll see as a record, there'll be.
Before and then after.
Because this is the version that was discussed at the meeting, but we're referring to a future version.
Yep.
Yep, thank you. That's, that was going to be my suggestion. Um, yeah, and I think, I think we were interested in uh, this discussion to help us as we start shaping the upcoming planning work program to. Just help get a sense of priority. As we've discussed previously, we have a whole lot of topics that are mandatory that are coming at us. And so we're going to be busy working on those for the next year or two. And so having a sense of potential priority for this uh, potential new project is helpful uh, as we start that effort as well. So, thank you.
I don't want us to get in the situation of our community thinking that we've committed more than we've actually committed to. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's, it, this complex situation with the uh, Alpenrose redevelopment as well as this complex intersection is much clearer to at least me.
I was gonna ask you a question. Um, I think I heard the chair say some. I might not be phrasing that correctly, so please correct me. Transfer the town center or the intersection? I'm not sure I follow. And is that something you're coming back to us?
Well, the, the uh, the challenge, well, not a challenge, an opportunity here is that the um, town center area, it's currently unincorporated. It's within the Beaverton urban planning area, which sort of assumes that in the future, Beaverton will annex that area. So I think the chair is just referencing the fact that we want to leverage our work with the city, whatever work we do. Uh, and even potentially having the city in a lead role, knowing that there'll be the long-term jurisdiction with land use and development authority over the site there. Um, our role would be focused, uh, probably primarily on transportation planning, just ensuring that the county road facilities are designed in a way. That will work for the county system in the long term as well. And it's, uh, that, that is one of the big challenges. It's an opportunity, a challenge here is that the land use and the transportation are going to be so intertwined in this area. The transportation solution can determine a lot about the character of the future town center and um, the development can do the same in terms of. What the um, um, transportation needs are. So it's a, it's a real. Ball of yarn.
And this leveraging work with the city, I'm assuming you mean the staff, the city side, is this something we have visibility to? The board, when I say we?
Yeah, so we would bring it back as a part of our work, work plan. Obviously, we wouldn't move forward without having further discussions with the city of Beaverton. We've had a very preliminary discussion about options for future planning here. They've indicated as well, they're busy dealing with a number of other urgent initiatives right now and don't have staff capacity to devote a lot of time uh, to any work at this point. So I think this discussion will also be helpful for us as we continue having discussions with our peers at the city.
Thank you. So, and just, we heard um. Multiple like um, points of thinking, uh, questions from the board. And so that's, we're coming back for staff to kind of take in what we heard from your board. And then coming back with a clear next steps to memorialize that. Any, any of the changes to the slide deck that will be made, uh, what I heard are really factual or um, changes to the slide deck. To add additional content that was either verbalized, different versions of the map, um, such as the overlay of the land use and transportation system. So that just brings clarity into what was discussed today, um, from, um, for the purpose of the record. It does not change, it does not um, give direction to staff to work in either way. That will come back to the board after we debrief.
Okay, thank you all.
And with that, we'll close for lunch and come back to our agenda at one o'clock.